We're good. All right, good evening. I would like to call to order the April 2nd, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone here for anything that is not currently on our agenda? Seeing is none, and I have no announcements. We can move right into item number one. Cable committee update on resource room sound discussion.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just wanted to come before you to say that we, the cable committee is trying to move forward with the project to improve the sound in this room. The biggest problem is this, is that when there's a crowd in the room, the people in the back of the room cannot hear you, and when people in the back of the room speak, the people at home cannot hear. So there's a problem. The system is now about 12, 13 years old, and so we have gotten a quote, which is about $16,900 to basically completely redo the audio system so that the sound in this room can be heard by all, and so that the people at home have, and people who view it later, can hear the entire proceedings rather than just what happens at this table. And so that's basically the thrust of what we are proposing, and I guess we just needed your go-ahead. We've sort of been messing around with this. We originally proposed splitting the cost with the town, and I think it would be best in order to get the project done if the cable committee just went ahead and got the whole thing. We have submitted a capital request through the cable, through the capital committee, and so that we can get approval at the town meeting, and we would just need to have your approval to go forward with this.
I think we need one, even though I like the fact that, like, some of my snarky comments are missed.
They may be missed out there, they're not missed up here.
I don't see any issues with it.
I know, we're using cable revenues, correct?
Yes, yes.
Whatever the profit term is, I think.
Yes, we use, yes, the cable funding, yes.
I mean, certainly we want to foster an environment where everybody can hear what we're doing, and they hear especially what the visitors and the citizens have to say.
And there have been some complaints recently about these issues, so we'd like to move ahead.
That's been, yeah, one of the things that's routinely brought up, so I'm thrilled that we're moving on it. Just for the microphones up here, do you know what style they are? Are we going to push a button to be heard, or?
I think that's included in the proposal, is this push-button microphone. We'll come up with the specifics when we get to that point, but I don't know if pushing a button every time you speak would be the best way to go about it. It's probably maybe better to push a button to mute it.
I think that might be better.
I'm sure you'd flip that.
I'll be fighting these guys to keep them muted, man.
Now, we had talked about redoing this room a little bit. Matt, or maybe it's cable. Where are we with that, and does whatever we do going to fit with what's been proposed tonight?
Yeah, I think it's all rolled up in that one proposal now.
Is there stadium seating for these large crowds that we pull in every night?
No, we have these delightful chairs that...
All right. I just worry, I'd hate to see it.
Got for free from the school, and they were getting rid of them.
Those chairs have history, you can tell just by looking at them.
There's a lot of people in detention in those.
I have to mention that, they were free.
I'm sure at least one person named Inferno sat in one of those chairs once.
That's a safe bet.
I think it's free.
Yeah, I like it.
I like it, I'm in favor of it.
So, do you want to put a formal motion out there, Mr. Cortez?
I move, we're putting this on the warrant, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
I move that we put the budget request as stated on the warrant.
I'll second.
It was made by Dave and seconded by Mike. Any further discussion?
I should have asked earlier, how much in the cable fund?
How much is in the cable fund? I think, off the top of my head, I'm going to say about $180,000.
Yeah, we've got plenty.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I still would like the stadium seating, the bad one. People are crammed in like...
Future request, right.
We got $168,000 to spend.
Could put in Bonin's bleachers.
What about...
All right, so we have the school FY20 budget presentation. We have some folks from the school, Mr. Maines, and Brett, and Courtney, and...
Bring Neely up, too.
Neely, absolutely.
Anybody who wants to come up.
Neely's always welcome. She doesn't even need an invite. She can come hang out with us anytime.
Much appreciated.
Good evening, and I'll start by saying that thank you for your understanding last week, as I was fighting a losing two-day battle with the stomach bug, and wasn't pleasant, so I thank you for moving it to this week. Second is that we, the goal today is the opportunity to speak to everybody about the process that we've undertaken over a number of months, starting real quickly with the original budget and working our way down. I do have a document that I'll share with you, to the point where we have now, I will get to the point where we're down to a 2% and a 1% of what that means for our original budget, and you can see the process of how we went to, went about getting to that process. So, I don't think we need that many, but I did make some copies, so. When we get together, the first thing that we do is we're looking to build what we believe is the real, what would be our best budget possible? If we, if everything was fantastic and money was not an issue, what would you, what would we want, and what are the things that we would want to have in our budget, and what would it come up to? And so, the original dollar amount was better than $14 million, but in that $14 million there was also full implementation of the continuation of the Moving the District Forward Plan that we had talked about. That Moving the District Forward Plan was in 2017, '18, '19, and going forward for 1920, the goal was to add, add on and continue to grow the district and continue to make us as competitive as we could be in the Blackstone Valley and across the state. So, the original budget was presented, we obviously had to come back with school committee, and the discussion centered around the fact, can we come to a level-serviced budget? And level-staffed, level-service, and that's kind of a moving topic, a moving target as well, and as close as we could to staying as whole as we possibly could for next year. Again, the premise behind that was to maintain stability and to keep the district moving in a positive direction. So, the administrative team underwent the process of going through a review of everything that we had in the original budget and making some very difficult decisions to try to get down to what would it look like to get to level-service, level-staffed budget. We did that work, we got to the point where it was at $13,744,111, a 3.16%, which we knew was, again, above the charge of the 1%, 2% that we had been, had been given. So, the documents you have, I'll sort of walk you through what we did, from the very first page all the way to the very back. So, the first thing we did is that we had, as I mentioned, a number of positions that we felt were critical to us moving forward, remaining as competitive as possible, and those positions that are listed there are the Spanish position, a STEM position, a couple of STEM positions, as you can see, and all the way over to academic center, health teacher, science teacher, per diem, athletic trainer, replacing some PCs at the high school. So, we immediately took that $290,400 off the, off the table. So, that meant at that point then, with those position cuts, we knew at that point in time, we would not be expanding any course offerings or any programs going forward, and those, of course, would be linked to the, with the presentation we had done about moving the district forward. So, that was the very first thing we did, is we took them completely off the table. The next thing was in, how do we get to a level-service, level-staffed budget, and then how do we get to the 1%, 2% budget? So, the second endeavor was to make some cuts across the district. You can see them listed there under the second, a total of $69,044, but in there are office supplies, instructional supplies, technology supplies, some coaching and advisor positions, building and ground supplies. We made those cuts. At about the same time, we had been made aware of a retirement and a resignation that had come through, and that was also another reduction, and that totaled $70,815. The next step that happened was that the school committee made the decision, in reviewing, based on a budget subcommittee recommendation brought forward, the school committee made the decision that they would dig a little bit deeper into revolving accounts, and they would take $41,691 out of the preschool revolving account, and that they would take another $100,000 out of the school choice account. That brought the total that the school department was now using to $2,826,76, again, with the commitment that they had made for the past two years to try to maintain as much stability and sustainability in our schools. The reduction cuts, the additional revolving dollars, brought us to what we felt was a level-service budget, which was $13,744,111, which is a 3.16% increase, which does not equal the 1%, 2% that we had been charged with. So, the question then becomes, okay, so what does the district do next to get to the 2%? As you follow along with that document that I provided you, we needed to cut an additional How did we get there? We cut three part-time support positions, some stipend positions, textbooks, a universal cut of our one-to-one Chromebook plan for the middle school, completely cut, which is a $40,000 cut, and a reduction of approximately a .5 faculty member within the district. That gets us to the 2%.
Sorry, superintendent, the Chromebooks, that's a deviation from the plan that was... Are we totally away from iPads now?
Not completely, no. We still have iPads that are in service, and the plan was, Tim, was to bring the one-to-one onboard at the middle school, those viable iPads that have been in service, for how long? I don't know, four years, five years, maybe?
Yeah, four years, yeah.
Then we're going to be transitioned down to the elementary school, so we could then parse them out, the ones that were well-functioning.
But I think generally we found, I think, the Chromebooks are the better solution for us going forward.
Right.
Didn't we know that back then, though?
No, actually, you know what? We really didn't. It wasn't until we started really using the Chromebooks at the high school that we realized that because of the keyboard aspect, and also because of the way in which it would work with the MCAS, now everything MCAS is online, I'm sorry, is electronic, so we use, we need the keyboard, it's just, it just turned out to be a better, a better device for us. But originally, I think everybody thought that the iPad was going to be the be-all, end-all.
But they have served the district well.
No question.
And they've been, they've got a lot of use out of it.
And there's still, still the use.
There's still certain uses for them.
Yes.
We don't have the universal kind of use that we had hoped for originally, whereas, you know, I think a combination of Chromebooks and Apple iPads, then each of these is probably the best way to go with this one.
But iPads, given to kids, are not going to last forever, is that fair to say?
I think that's, that's the other thing, I think we'll find the Chromebooks hold up a bit more.
Need to be realistic.
And clamshell type of situation is going to be better than those open-faced, you know, tablets.
So, that 2% budget gets us to $13,589,970, and that's aligned with the 2%. And then, the next exercise for us was to decide, what would it take for us to get to a 1% budget, and that would be an additional cut of $133,235. The only viable place to go there was one of two places, was either programs, i.e. athletics, band chorus, school drama, whatever it might be that we would have to cut across the board. With, I would think that the biggest brunt of that would have to come out of the athletic budget, or we would have to cut an additional 2.2 faculty members, which gets us to a total of 2.8 faculty members, to get us to that, that final dollar amount, $13,456,735. That being said, what's the impact of all of that? Well, the obvious impact in all of that is that, my biggest concern is that we had, we had stepped forward and we had presented under the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, the School Committee, what can we do collectively to turn around those numbers that was a couple of years ago, so that the school choice numbers were not going out at bigger numbers, and that we were going to turn that whole school choice piece around. If you look at the data that I did provide you in advance of this meeting, you can see the trend that you, that shows up with the school choice. Where we were probably seven or eight years ago, what happened when, when the bottom was falling out, and we were cutting all of our athletic programs and staffing and so forth, and then when we, the school committee made the decision in 1718, or 1617, 1617 to stabilize...
1718.
1718 to stabilize the district by taking more money out of the revolving accounts, and then with the additional support that the town provided us with regards, with the override, you could see that the, the numbers have changed again favorably to the school choice, where the increase now, we're back to 131 students, school choicing in, our school choice outnumber has dropped down as well, so there's a plus in that. So, that was our charge, and our charge was to have a plan that would talk about academic programs and new initiatives. And in those new initiatives and in those plans are a number of things that we had hoped to continue to roll out in this, which would be the, really, the second year of the Moving Forward Plan, would be things such as the distance learning program that we've talked about in association with the Blackstone Valley Superintendent's Consortium. That being that, instead of students not being able to take a course, each of the 13 districts in the, in the consortium would take on the responsibility of offering courses that students could take online. So, for example, the best example I can give you is that our AP Microeconomics is pretty well-attended in our, in our school district, but nobody else in the, in the valley has it, because they don't have the numbers of requests. So, our teacher could then put the course online as part of this Blackstone Valley Consortium, and students would be able to access it from other towns, so that they could then have, he could then teach the course to students on distance learning. This is a, this is an initiative that we had really explored a little bit when we went over and met with the Educational Alliance people. It is a very viable, and we have, there's real movement in this going on right now, significant movement on this, to the point where we're looking to offer the first course next year, which would be in manufacturing, that would allow us to take advantage of the education hub over with the Blackstone Valley Education Foundation. It would allow our students to do online learning in manufacturing, but also to go over and do hands-on learning as part of the program. That is the first attempt in that, and then all of, we have had a number of meetings, and the plan is to expand the curriculum offerings as we go forward, which is going to provide many more opportunities for our students to be able to get into courses online, but also, much like we did with the AP, where the kids would go on a Saturday, they would go and they would spend the day, could be an assessment, it could be a hands-on activity, it could be a job experience type of thing. That is a real, very real possibility, and, and we are definitely moving in that direction. We had talked about some of the positions that you saw cut in there, STEM at the middle school. You know, we're having our students assessed on MCAS, but we don't have STEM in the middle school. A 1.0 position there would address that. We looked at the high school, one of the conversations that was had, and I know Matt was there, and as was Brett, when we talked to, about the possibility of bringing animal and plant sciences to our, to our district. Hiring a biology or a science teacher at the high school would afford us that opportunity to begin the process of rolling out animal science and plant sciences in an area that is clearly a burgeoning area for employment for our students down the road. We already have established a relationship with an area farm, and with an area, with two area farms that would allow our students hands-on opportunity with animals and in the, and working with the crops and so forth there. So, we would have that opportunity. The health teacher allows us to do a number of things that would allow our, if I can say it quickly, and as I can, we have art teachers and music teachers, and we've had manufacturing teachers teaching health classes, because we had to have somebody teaching the health classes, so that took them away from electives. This year, the school committee approved the requirement of our students to have one credit, one course in, in the arts. The health teaching position would allow the art teacher who's doing two courses outside of art to teach art classes, because now we need to get, every kid has to go through an art, whether it be music or whether it be an art class, they have to get in and do an art class in order to graduate. And so, that's, that was one of the benefits to have in that position, go in there. So, there's that. We talked a little bit about the, the high school being able to expand and offer fundrais and try to bring a greenhouse to the, to the school, community gardens to the school. So, all of those were things that were part of this rollout. Now, we knew that when we offered the, when we presented to the school committee, the real budget, it was not a number that was tenable, but we had originally said, when we sat in front of this, everybody here, that this was a, a number of years down the road, but we wanted to continue to roll things out, continue to keep our momentum moving forward. The concern also would be that, you know, we stood here and we did present at school committee, at finance committee, at Board of Selectmen, and then at the tri-board meeting, that we rolled out this plan. We said with all sincerity that this is the way we want to go, that this is the way for us to move the district forward, that we believe that the, the animal and plant science is a real niche for this, for our school district that was going to attract students, school choicing into us, fewer students that might be going out to Norfolk Agricultural, which would be a turnaround as well. So, all of those things were things that we really presented, and we really presented with a, with a mindset that we wanted to be able to maintain stability, and that we wanted it to be sustainable going forward, year after year. And so, the plan, as we get down to the 2%, so I guess, in summation from my point of view, the 2% or the 1%, obviously, at, even at the level, the 3.16, there is no, there's no additional academic courses, programs, there are no additional programs that we can bring to our students and across the district. Basically, we, we maintain status quo, but there is no growth, and there is no continuation of the plan to move forward, even, even a small increment of moving forward. And that's the concern, and so that's what, I hope that explains everything as to how we got to where we got to, and where we are as of right now, and what the impacts of that, what the impacts of that are. So, those are the things that I had. I don't, Brett, you had, I don't know if there's any questions about that?
Yeah, any questions?
I'm happy to address it.
Pause for a second. Kevin can talk about stuff for two hours straight if we let him, so, you know, let's make him pause for a second and ask a question, Kevin.
Both of us. So, I guess the biggest thing is, is that, you know, and I understand what you guys are trying to do, and it is what we tasked you to do. So, it's just one of those things that knowing, knowing our overall budget can only increase by 2.5%, you know, incoming in and saying, I need 3.16. It's growing at a rate that the town couldn't keep up with. As much as we'd want to or love to and want to be able to fund it, we can't. You know, I mean, anything that shows over 2.5% growth is non-sustainable for, for an overall town budget, and it's not just Douglas, it's anywhere. So, and I know that Matt and I had the opportunity to sit down with you and the various department heads throughout the schools, and I kind of like the public to hear it, is the, from what I pulled out of that meeting, the largest intangible or like highest growth account that's coming in there is special education. And those are things that you can't forecast, and you can't predict, and you really can't budget to.
So, I'm going to let Neely jump in on that, I'm just going to put that in a little perspective first. So, I would say that under the best of circumstances, in order to maintain a level-service budget, given our, in our current contract situations with a 1.75 COLA and steps and lanes and whatnot, we would need roughly 2% just to stay flat in order to cover your COLA and your steps and lanes, you know, maybe 1.8, somewhere in that range, on a good year where no new circumstances come through the door. You heard in that meeting, we get new circumstances every year, and, you know, I'll let Neely maybe speak to kind of some of the challenges this year, and why, you know, what a level-service budget is coming into this year is actually a higher level or a different level than the level of service that we saw from you guys last year.
Yep, so there's a lot of perception around special education, and, you know, the fact that, that it is such a large part of the budget. I think, I think what we, there's two main points that I want to bring up. One, the main point, the students that are special education students deserve the education that we are providing to them, okay? The second part of it is many of the things that we have to put in place, or the kids should have in place, are mandates, and these are unfunded mandates. So, what we come up against in a public school is a situation where we have students that, you know, we try our best to educate, but we have to have a whole-child approach, and a part of that whole-child approach is globally looking at the student, looking at the academic realm, looking at the social-emotional realm, looking at the behavioral realm. Lately, we've had a lot of students that have moved into the town, and we're happy to have them, but what I've heard is through social media and through word of mouth, they've heard that Douglas has good special education, and that, that's a fantastic thing and something to be proud of. However, if a student has a need or an area of weakness, such as behavior or a social-emotional need, we have to make sure that we address that. Through the creation of programs within the district, we've tried to address some of those weaknesses for many of our kids. However, some kids have issues that are beyond what we can handle in a public school. So, what we have to do is we have to go into what you call an extended evaluation, which is an evaluation through a private, most often therapeutic environment, and then from there, what you do is you have to make a determination as to whether or not the student can come back here or needs to be in the therapeutic environment. It's all data-driven, and it's all safety-based. And a very interesting statistic is that 13 out of 14 kids that are out of district right now, those kids all have behavioral or safety issues. So, we have one student that is currently out of district due to educational reasons. Again, these are things as a school district that we want to address and we have to address. For me, being the, not the special education administrator, but the student support administrator, I see both sides of this. So, I see the special ed end, and I see the general education end, and my fear is that we, we start taking away from general education, or we don't add what we need to for general education. And again, that is no slight on, on special education, but somehow, we have to find a level of equity. And we can, we can go back and forth all day about how difficult the state and the federal government make it on us because they don't fund us in these areas, but it's a, it's a reality. So, each year it does come up, and again, it's our reality. What I will say is we are, we are, I think, doing the best in the way of having exquisite programs, exquisite staff, we've had an ability to keep our kids in district, we actually, out of all of the, the schools in the Blackstone Valley and extending out a little, we have the least out-of-district placement. So, we are saving money in that way. Some of the programs that we've started have saved a lot of money in the, in the way of keeping kids in, but again, things are changing, there is more of a mental health component now, and that is not ju, and this is the scariest part, it's not just impacting special education anymore, it's impacting general education, which then translates to special education. So, we've got to figure out a way to balance it, you know?
And I mean, that seems to have been trending, like, it looks like that's, more and more kids are coming into schools with social-emotional issues or various other things that would put them into, you know, what they need an IEP or some form of special education program to help them. And that's trending up, and it looks like state aid and federal aid is trending down.
Correct.
So, I mean, looking at it from a business perspective, I mean, looking at the writing on the wall and the trending that's taking place, does it make sense at that point in time to look at trying to pool resources with other districts and other communities that make the bucket larger? that make the bucket larger? And become, you know, I think Matt used the term, which I liked, it was a Comcast term that we use a lot, like a center of excellence, to where you're, you're putting students into, there may be a busing challenge, or at least something to explore that Douglas and Oxbridge and Northridge and Sutton and all of these towns in the Blackstone Valley are finding a way that this is what our budgets are, but how much further can we strung, you know, stretch our dollars, looking at it as a unified front?
And we, we actually are doing that.
Right. So that's definitely been something that's gone on over the last number of years. I've, I've been in, only in this position for two years and it's been a focal point of conversation. They have, I know Courtney has and, and Neely has looked at, can we, with somebody on, on us to save a route and so forth? And the problem is that we just haven't been able to find really good balances where somebody could pick up one of our kids and take them, or we could take somebody else's and share the cost. Part of it is that a lot of the places that we're going to are a distance, you can't go beyond an hour to go get somebody and then go, can you, put you over an hour? So there really hasn't been, been much in the way of, and this has been discussed on Infinitum for years and years and years. It's, it does not seem to be something that, that we've been able to pull off.
I, I don't think Kevin's necessarily referring to transportation though.
But that, but also programs as well.
Yeah, how can we, can we, can we work together on the programs? And I, I think...
And I know the dangerous term that gets floated out there is, is to look at something as a region.
Right.
You know, and everybody gets, as soon as you hear regional school district, everybody's like, ah, and gets scared. But if you look at the funding model that BVT has, it works. You have 13 communities that are pitching into a single budget. So obviously that's, it's a working model, it's not optimal.
When we start talking about that with special education, to, to me, I think one of the great things about our, our, our special education programs is the amount of inclusion programs we have with the kids that are with, I guess, your, your general population. You start to want centers of excellence, now you're pooling all your special education, education kids into one area. They're not in an inclusive environment now, which defeats a lot of the purpose of a lot of the programs. So it, there's just challenges there too, Kevin, just to, you know.
I get it. And there's no magic bullet that, that cures all this, but I, I think all of us should be tasked to sit down and, and work as, you know, different departments and committees and say, how can we make this work? Let's get creative and let's talk to other towns.
The conversations are going on. I, I, I say that to you with all honesty and sincerity, that they're, they are going on. It's, it's a pretty significant lift to try to develop, not to mention the, the various components that would make up that type of a school, depending upon what the students' needs are. And they are, they are varied and you also have different grade levels and so forth.
Yeah.
Yeah, all the compliance issues up. One of the things that I did put in your, in your packets that went out electronically is this document, and this is a comparison from the DESE, and it basically compares us with a number of different schools. So for example, this, the population, this goes back to 1617, our number of, of students was 1402. So a similar school to us was, was Quabot, 1405. We had 238 students with disabilities, they had 226. We had 387 students with high needs, they had 600 with high needs. There's virtually no difference. Hopedale was a little bit smaller than us, yet they have the same number of students with disabilities, the same number of students, almost identically with high needs. It is, it is universal, our population, our, our numbers, and if you, if you, if you have time to really look at that and study it, we really are, you know, no different than any other district in the state of Massachusetts. I agree with you, Kevin, that it is, it is financially become a burden, but it is a reality for everybody.
I will tell you how we are different. And if this in any way comes off arrogant, and this is not the way I mean it, how we are different is we are a district that does not end up in hearing, we don't end up in mediation, we don't end up with, with lawyers having to come and be a part of our meetings. We save a grand amount of money in the way that we do it right. So of course, we'll, we'll continue to, to look at, you know, and, and I have, I've met with, with the 13 directors the last couple of years, trying to look at, how can we do this to be more cost-effective? But the one thing I see that is unique with us is that we don't have those financial challenges and we don't have those compliance issues, you know?
Well, we have you.
Correct. So, you know, I, I think we're the head, we're ahead of the game with that and, and that can be an enormous expense. And the, the other thing that I think we have to pay attention to is, is the future. We do have some students that are going to be turning 22, you know, this coming year, next year. You know, and I think that we'll see a cost savings. In saying that, again, it's the crystal ball effect.
Somebody else.
You don't have a crystal ball. So we can say a certain amount of kids are aging out, but then will, will five or six kids move in that have out of district?
That cost twice as much.
And where we dug further into our revolving funds, we've done that knowing that we might have kids aging out and saying, okay, we can go into those revolons now, knowing that we might have to go further into them in future years because of these things, so.
Revolving fund roulette.
Kevin, if I could just say, the, the school choice document that I gave you as well, you saw that in, in, in 1415, we were at 135 students coming into our district. Bottom dropped out 1516, we were down to 117. We, we rallied it a little bit at 124, then last year, 1718, we went down to 110. And right now, it's 131. So it's come up 21 students because of the, the commitment that the town made, as well as the school committee made, to stabilize what we were doing. We immediately saw a, a change in this number of students coming in. And we went from last year, 76 students going out, down to 67 going out, again trending down the way you wanted it to trend. And then the last document that I provided you was this document that Josh Romano had created at the high school. On the, on the left-hand side are the programs that we're, that are in, that, that schools are engaging in, and you can see some of the programs that are in there that we're talking about. These are things that we had talked about, which was the pathways program, which we are beginning to implement, the plant science piece, we wanted to bring criminal justice onboard, the early college program, which I should have mentioned before. We are involved in a cohort with Quinn Sigerman and with Becker, and our students will be able to, much like Doc had been talking about, Matt, about the early college program, kids getting earning credits, they will be able, students in our, in our district will be able to begin, begin enrolling in these programs, earning college credits while they're still in school. And, and we would be one of only three schools in the whole area that would have that going forward. We will have that next year. Animal science piece of it. And, and all of those programs that we talked about, the biomed piece, which married to our APs, would be very competitive, if not, I would think possibly even stronger than what, what the, the medical program that BVT offers as well. So those are all things that sort of stay in abeyance because we, we're not implementing and not adding anything to our course offerings or our staffing levels to support that, which like I said, was, was the charge and, and I get, I get kind of emotional and passionate about it because I believe that the, that this is, this is what is going to really keep us in the forefront, keep us competitive, provide our students with, with the 21st century opportunities to learn, all of those things that, that we really need to do, which we had been sort of tasked to do. So I'll, I'll be quiet for a little bit.
I have no doubt that, you know, the things that you've implemented up to now have definitely done exactly what we'd asked you to do. And I think what's just, it weighs heavy on me, and I'm not going to speak for everybody else at the table, is as much as we want to do it, you know, anything over a two and a half percent growth rate, we just, we can't sustain it. I just don't know the way to sustain it. And I wish I did. I like, I'd love to hit the mega bucks and donate tons of money.
Now, so, 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 you know, we, we know this is a problem that can't be solved completely at the local level. Senator Fatman and Representative McKenna are coming to our school committee meeting tomorrow night, and we continue to press them on what's at the state level. What's that?
Maybe I'll pay a visit.
Seven o'clock in the auditorium.
Please do.
They love it when I show up.
So we're going to share with them some of the successes that we had and things that we've been able to do on our own, and things that we're going to do thanks to the, you know, the override and what the, the town has, has entrusted us with, with that. And let them know that it's still, that, that, all it really did is push the cliff that we were on last year out, out a few more years and that without, you know, their help, you know, we're, we're back on that, that cliff in a few years and, you know, see what, what, you know, you know, the reality of this, you know, so.
Well, I mean, there's a multitude of ways that we can go at things too, is I'm sure, you know, like while you guys were talking about some of the programs, like the Chromebooks, like reaching out to Microsoft for their schools program, because I know that they donate a ton of equipment if you're willing to be what they call a showcase school. So they'll walk in and give you 50% of your PCs for no charge and then all of your Microsoft licensing. So I mean, there's ways that I'm happy to sit down and, and work with you.
I, I do, you know, would like to bring, you know, school committee, board of selectmen and, and finance committee together this summer, or September, the very latest, talk about not just a, a one-year budget perspective, but a five-year plan perspective, really tear through, you know, Matt's, Matt's, you know, spreadsheet, I think is fantastic, that he has with that, and, and really talk about what that means for, for the school department and, and really the, all, all the town departments and, and start, you know, put together some ideas around, you know, holistic ideas there, so.
I agree. I like the joint committee meetings. What I felt bad about and why we ended up bringing them to a stop is that for a little while it turned into, let's beat up on the school committee.
It did, yeah, no.
And I wasn't happy about that.
Yeah, and I feel comfortable that we can go forward without it becoming that at this point, so.
Well, Kevin likes to fight. Like it's just how he is.
I like to fight. I've never been in a fight, but I, I do like to try to bring my point across.
I know we promised we wouldn't take too much, I want to just leave you with two more things.
Sure.
If I could, I, I always like to bring just the, the, the big picture perspective. We still, as of the latest data for full year, FY 2018, we're 37th lowest in per people expenditure. That's actually up significantly where we used to be. We've been 14th lowest, 10th lowest, 11th lowest, 4th lowest, 3rd, 2nd, 1st lowest over the years. That's, that's for in district only. So that's based on some of the investment that we made in, in digging into, into some revolving funds in FY 18. But 37th lowest is still 11th percentile, you know, for, you know, out of 320 district districts. So we're still, you know, thank for your buck, you're not getting much better than what you do with Douglas. Teacher salaries, average teacher salaries, we're second lowest in surrounding areas, we're 13% lower than state averages, 4% lower than the averages of all, you know, surrounding towns. You know, where we are and net school spending, that's a formula for the state that required net school spending. It's, you know, chapter $70 plus a, a local contribution, minimal local contribution that's required of you. On average, at the state level, towns are spending 25% over the required minimum. We've been spending 2% over the required minimum. I think this year we jumped to 4%? 3.5%. Surrounding towns are spending at a, at a minimum 10% over net school spending around us. I'm sorry, no, uh, Northridge dropped to 6.5. The other area of schools around is 17% over, 45% over, 26% over, 14% over. So again, from a dollar per student, yeah, I don't think anyone's managing their budget much better than what Douglas is from a, from a school's perspective, so. And lastly, I know there's some interest in, in the school bus contract and what we're trying to do there, that came up at your last meeting. We are discussing the proposals tomorrow night at our meeting. The, the consultant originally came back with a proposal reducing three routes, which was, was going to be insane, what that would, would do to our, our students. And we asked to come back with proposals for reducing two bus routes or one bus route. And we're going to vote on, you know, whether we want to accept either one of those tomorrow night. I have full confidence that we will likely vote for at least the one bus route reduction. Even that's a 7.5%, you know, reduction in overall bus routes. We have 13 total routes, you know, we would be taking one of those 13 down. But we'll give heavy consideration to the two bus route reduction. But just so you understand, you know, that's, that's, you know, and I know it's very frustrating when we see, you know, buses in the morning that are half-full, if that, but we've never had a capacity issue when it came to our bus routes. We have a distance issue in our town with a giant state force in the middle of it that our buses need to drive around. You know, we could probably get away with seven bus routes if we wanted to have kids on the bus for two hours, you know? It's just from a capacity perspective, but it's just, you know, we just don't feel comfortable having kids on the bus for much more than 45 minutes.
If we cut that many bus routes out, we could probably put TVs on the bus.
It really is a space, it's a space and time issue, it really is. And, and I mentioned to Matt a while ago that when we reduced, seven years ago, six, seven years ago, we reduced, we had three runs.
Five years ago, five years.
Five years ago, okay? We reduced down to two. And the big concern with that was, those who were around was that can they make their runs and not have it be an hour on, on the bus? It wasn't, as, as Brett said, a capacity issue, it was a time issue, a time and space issue. And, and we know that there's, there's, the capacity issue isn't, isn't the problem. And I think that what's going to happen with this is that there'll be some growing pains and conceivably, some of those runs could run, you know, could run long and you may have some, some parents. We, we looked at this after we made the reduction from three to, from three to two, that was part of the discussion. Could we reduce the number of buses and, and keep the three runs? But the issue that we came up with was that we felt that there was going to be too much time on the bus. My concern with that, and, and I, I mentioned this the other day when we were on the, on the conference call a couple of weeks ago, was that that could be a very real possibility. And, and I understand the reasoning behind it. I don't, I don't, I don't say that it's not a, a one of, with merit, it certainly is. The question's going to become, what, you know, what could be the possible ramifications? And then how do we respond to it if we find out that it is, you know, a really long run and, and kids are on the buses for 15 minutes an hour and so forth? That won't, that won't go well, I mean, within the town.
Yeah, as I was just saying, you know, you know, just wrapping it up, if, if we do decide to only go with reducing one route, we are committed to continue to look at this. And, you know, if we go out to contract right now for a three-year contract, there's nothing that prevents us from reducing another route next year. If we look at this, we feel more comfortable with it at that time. So this is something that we are committed to, to keeping on the docket, you know, going forward. Regardless of what we do tomorrow night, it'll be something that we continue to talk about moving forward as well, so.
Excellent.
It is something we're always...
Question for you, Mr. Means. I notice Douglas High School fiscal year, this fiscal year, 18 to 19, initiated a trial special education delivery model, which you're looking to expand across all four grade levels. Could you give me a little information on that?
Neely could do it.
Did we expand or are we planning to, or where are we?
So at the elementary school and somewhat at the, at the high school, what we're looking at is going to more of a co-teaching model. So research is showing that this is a better way to deliver instruction to not just special education students, but all students. So what we did was, we, we started implementing a co-teaching model with, with a couple of special education teachers and a couple of general education teachers at the high school this year. And started small. And then at the elementary school, what ended up happening was we had, I believe it was three paraprofessional positions that people ended up leaving for various reasons. We didn't fill them and it, it looked like an opportunity that we could capitalize and move in a direction that we wanted to, which was in this, I, I put the paras in the highest regard, but we really want to put certified teachers in front of the kids. So what we did was, there was just little financial impact. So those three paraprofessional positions, we were able to turn into one teaching position. So then we changed that model in a way that now there is one special education teacher per grade level at, at the elementary school, which is much more effective, so.
Do we look at, I, I see it mentioned under the high school, are we looking to expand that or?
We would like to for the high school level.
Right now, one of the, one of the initial casualties of this was, was positions at the high school for special education. We didn't even put them in, the, the moving the district forward because it was, it was, it wasn't really part of the district moving forward plan, it was an additional plan that we were talking about.
Thank you.
And if I could just take one second, everybody's indulgence, I think we're at a critical point right now, again. I think that there's been, I've been here 10 years, there's been a lot of things that we have done that have, I think have, have really improved where we are as an academic institution and also our programs. Certainly plenty of room for growth and that, and that's the plan. We have great kids in our buildings, we have great teachers, we have a lot of things that are going really, really well for us. And, and the plan that we laid out a couple of years ago only requires some additional growth along the way, but, and I think that the return on that investment will be enormous because we'll keep kids here, kids will want to come here, we'll keep our programs running, we'll keep our user fees at a, at a rate that is, that is agreeable with, with our, with our people. And I think that, and I said this at all the meetings that we went to with the Educational Alliance, I think that we are the, we are a, a diamond in the rough here. I don't think people realize just what we have going here and we're really making gains. And if we go a couple, two or three years, well, I'll be retired, but if we go a couple, two or three years and we, and we, and we sort of stagnate, I don't, I don't know that we will be in that same category in a couple of years from now. And that's the danger with, with even just making incremental growth keeps the momentum going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Sorry for keeping you guys.
Education is important.
Education is important.
It is. Mr. Wojcik, agreement for joint negotiation and purchase of certain insurance coverage is impossible vote.
I don't see it in the packet, but I think it went out. Did it go out?
You were going to give it to me and I never got, received it.
The board has already voted to authorize me, I believe, to sign. I did want to put the most recent version in front of you, not because it's going to change that much, but because I want you to actually vote the version that gets signed. So we'll just have to put it on for the 16th, I was pretty sure I sent it around. But irregardless, we are in a very good spot. It might be hopeful if you held off for a couple of weeks anyway. We had an IAC meeting today, all of the collective bargaining units signed an MOA to go forward with the joint purchasing group, with the exception of the Douglas teachers, but they only did, they only withheld their signature because they want to have a ratification vote a week from tomorrow. But it is my understanding that the executive committee supports the MOA, so we should have all the momentum going into that discussion. So the charge from the board to me was to get the collective bargaining units to agree in they have. So we should be in a position now to approve the joint purchasing group agreement and sign it at your next meeting on April 16th, with the support of all of our collective bargaining units. So that's, it's a very positive development, it means the foundation of our budget is solid. We can count on the rates that we've put into the budget. And as you know, Gene always budgets a certain number of family plans above and beyond what we subscribe now, just to have that cushion because we, there'll always be people on the school side, especially with younger people, who are either going to age on to our plan because they're not going to be covered by their parents' plan anymore or make other life decisions, so. That is the one bitter pill of looking at even a well-crafted school committee plan, let's say it's five teachers at $50,000. If they all take a family plan, that's $24,000 each, it's another $120,000 that goes on to the town side. So it's a lot deeper expense and more difficult to sustain over time because that 120 doesn't grow, has not been growing at 2% a year, it's been growing at an average of 7 or 8% a year. And that's what we're trying to do. If we can attack that and get it down to low single digits every year, we will actually have more resources to provide our school department. It takes a year or two to pivot. And that was the thought process behind joining the purchasing group. We are, going to start off with three, I think, Dudley, Charlton School District, the town of Webster, and the town of Douglas. But we anticipate a lot of interest from Southbridge, Milbury, and Stoughton.
Stoughton.
Next year, so.
So just three this year?
Just three, but we are still over the critical threshold of 1,500 beneficiaries.
Nice work, Matt.
I echo that, very good work.
Building department fees and possible votes.
How you doing? Mark Cathlin, interim building commissioner?
Matt, I'll ask you too soon. Sorry.
That's all right. So I've been asked here to talk about the new fees that I'd like to put in place. So I, the purpose of this was to get more in line with the surrounding towns as far as fees, because I think there are a lot, there's a lot, do you guys have this?
Yes, we do.
That's all marked up in red?
Yep.
So there was a lot of areas where we were charging for multiple inspections for only one inspections, you know, for, if you go through the whole thing. Now, in 2012, this was revised, and I believe it was adopted, the ICC evaluation. So my change on that is I just want to change the, use their evaluation and then our cost would be $8 per thousand. That just ticks it up a little bit to get more revenue in. And then, and apply that to remodeling, multifamily, barns, garages, decks, basically everything down the line. Get rid of the shed, I mean, the building codes have changed, so you don't need to pull shed, a permit for a 120 square foot shed anymore, it's 200, 200 square feet. So basically just base it on $8 per thousand.
There's a lot of people in town probably very happy to hear that.
Yeah. Well, as long as they put them in the right place.
Setbacks.
Especially with the electrical and plumbing, like, let me find one here, electrical fees, additions and renovations on electrical fees, we're charging $75 when he has to make a minimum of two inspections. So I'm basing it on $50 an inspection to cover the costs that go out there. Same thing with plumbing. I don't think we changed the commercial, I mean, you could go up on the commercial end, but I think you want to entice businesses in town and not go up at this point. Any questions?
Looks good. I was going to give you a hard time, like highway robbery.
No, it's not highway robbery, I mean, this town's at a $20 a thousand and.
No, it looks good. Nice work.
Thank you. Well, when they added a trench permit, because that was never on there, and you, as you know, we have to pull trench permits now.
Damn it, I was just taking one in my eye, too.
Don't let me get you.
Would entertain a motion to accept these fees as presented?
So moved.
I'll second.
It was coked out of Mike and seconded by Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All set.
All good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Road use tri-state track?
This is an annual event that you've been proving every year. Last year, they had to move it because of the construction that was going on Route 16. There's no events this year preventing them from doing their plan, so no one has voiced any concerns, so if you would, would, I'd ask you to approve it as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Mike, seconded by Dave. Any further discussion?
I'm late again, the police chief is, oh, I see that.
Yeah, there's an approval.
Okay, be quiet. Yep, we're good.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
All right. EDC zoning change for annual town meeting and possible vote.
Can you give that to Kevin? Yes.
Yes, okay, moving on.
Is there someone here for that, or are we?
No, I think I'm it. Mr. Kundav is on vacation, I don't know that we have any EDC members present. Back in 2007, the town voted to designate certain parcels as priority development sites, and that triggers treatment of expedited permitting. All permitting must be completed within 180 days. With the passage of time, 12 years, the geographic areas of interest have shifted more towards 146 and away from the Webster line. And so, in what is one of the great ironies of the laws of the Commonwealth, in order to be able to do expedited permitting, we have to go through a very long process of town meeting votes, and then we go to the inter-agency permitting guru, or czar, or whatever, the ombudsman, and they approve, they, the Commonwealth approve our designations, and then it comes back to us for additional zoning work. But this is step one. It needs to go on to the warrant, and we do, as I think you know, have interest in these development sites along the Uxbridge line and the Route 16, 146 interchange. So we are trying to position the town to be in a, to move things along quickly. It's important for people to realize that if you don't complete the permitting work within the designated timeframe, they're deemed approved. So it lights a fire under everybody with jurisdiction to get their meetings held and their analysis done.
I'm all for putting it on the warrant.
I would move to include the two articles presented, removal of PDS designations and additional PDS designations.
Second.
Made by Dave, seconded by Tim. Any further discussion?
No, if we can do anything to expedite even more, let's expedite.
Expedite the expedition.
Yeah.
Expeditiously. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's that. I had to give you a hard time.
It's okay.
Proposed, where are we here?
Animal bylaw. Number seven.
Oh, yeah. Proposed change to Article 7, animals for ATM, possible vote?
The animal control officer was not able to make it tonight. He has tickets to a concert, his wife would kill him if he missed. I was hoping that the police chief would be here to speak on it, but I did submit all the comments that everyone made. I did send this, we did get this late. I sent it off to Rich Bowen, who gave it a quick perusal and gave you his comments on it. It is changing the current bylaw from a couple-page bylaw to a 36-page bylaw.
Is there a rush for this, for any reason?
Yeah, I agree with you. I had the same question, too, it seems like.
I've talked to the animal control officer on this, and it looks like he did his homework. And he did put a lot of thought into doing this, which was basically taking a lot of the gray area out of our current animal control bylaws and following mass general law to the T and substituting the comments of Commonwealth of Massachusetts to include the town of Douglas. That was my Reader's Digest abridged version of what his plan behind this was.
I think that the plan was probably well-formulated. I see Mr. Bowen's email, and I have to say, he has a lot of concerns, and some of them not in my area of practice certainly, but some of them I share.
Thoughts, Mr. Wojcik?
I just like that there's a section captioned puppy and kitten. I think it lends a whole new gravitas to our general bylaws. Attorney Bowen has pointed out a number of significant difficulties. I think this is the kind of thing that needs to be, there needs to be a public hearing or an invitation for the public to realize just how much is involved with microchipping and some of the other requirements in here. And the shunting, I think, of a fair amount of responsibility over the Board of Health, which is a significant reorganization, and I don't know if we're.
Prepared.
We're fully staffed for that, we need to think about this because we share the animal control officer with other towns, and it's a good arrangement. It's a very fair arrangement and budget efficient. We start to take those duties and put them onto a function that we have outside of that arrangement, it translates into cost, and to what end?
I think it makes sense to have our shared animal control officer sit down with our esteemed town council and hash out some of the questions and concerns that are sitting there.
I'm assuming the animal control officer has seen this email from Attorney Bowen?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll give the guy credit, he does his homework, though. He was very thorough.
Oh, it's a very comprehensive document, yeah.
He's also called and asked if he could speak with Rich Bowen, and I did give him the phone number.
Well, we will not give him a hard time because he would be in a lot of trouble with his wife if he was here, and I know what that's like, and that's not fun.
I think in addressing Attorney Bowen's concerns, I mean, if we stay out of the middle, see if the two of them can talk and reach some consensus, I think that's probably the best way to handle it.
So let's put a hold on this until they've had a chance to talk and put something together better, and also talk with Matt and figure out exactly what the ramifications are for the town. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Cool.
You?
All right. Wollam Lake Solar Farm pilot for ATM and possible vote.
Mr. Chairman, this is substantially the same pilot with the same terms as the other pilot that you already approved for, I guess you would call that West Street, and the other proposal that's already been through. Attorney Bowen and I shared a chuckle that perhaps this applicant's land use attorney doesn't have very much to do, so he took a great deal of liberty in making stylistic changes to Attorney Bowen's template. However, after reviewing it, town council advises that he's fine with it, the way it's written, it doesn't look exactly like the others. But I think the operative terms that are of interest, primary interest to me is that we assign the value at $7,500 per megawatt of capacity and inflate that fee 2.5% every year. So that is, seems to be the going standard. People shouldn't compare the current pilots to pilots that may have been negotiated three, four, five years ago under an earlier version of the solar incentive programs, because at that time they were more lucrative and they were paying higher rates. This industry's becoming more and more saturated, see a lot more of these installations, the going rates between seven and eight, and I, it's not the most eloquent term, but we basically split the baby, and what we wanted was the inflator. We wanted that to be there so that it grows at the same rate as the levy of the town and locks that in for us.
It's good business. And the new contract is same spirit of the original one, just different wording?
Yes.
Oh, hey.
That was for your benefit.
Some people have a doubt against semicolons, and it's just not right.
I love a semicolon.
I'm a big fan of semicolons.
I am, too.
I think they're better than dashes.
Better than dashes.
I'll go on record, you can quote me.
Yeah, put on your pants.
Yeah, put on your pants.
That does mean something else, you know.
No. Well, that can talk after.
Yeah.
Is it bad?
No.
Of course it is.
No, it's not.
Could be.
There is a hidden meaning to it, if you tattoo yourself. It's a support for people that try, that suicide.
Oh, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah.
That's good to know. That supported even one of them.
You are the semicolon, sir. Anyway.
In any case, this needs to, need your approval to go on the warrant for ratification.
I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
There it is. Made by Mike, seconded by Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. David, semicolon.
I don't know if we're going that far.
It's improper use of the semicolon.
I agree with Mr. Bowen.
If you just drop a semicolon randomly, it doesn't work.
Did you get him a red pen?
Grammar is a dying art.
And I'm not even billing the guy.
Grammar Nazi. So, I can't take this anymore. FY '20 budget discussion and possible vote. Here's the discussion, we have a budget for FY '20, right?
I could make it dance if you wanted to dance, I could make it sit still if you want.
What has changed since our last meeting?
Nothing.
So it's the same as presented?
We locked it down the way it is, for your consideration, I don't want to change anything at this point.
How does the town administrator and the finance director feel about that budget?
Far be it from me to speak for the finance director.
Don't do that.
I will only speak for myself. Look, we polished this up quite a bit, and it was, next year I expect a more graceful process, a more process-intensive process. We are limited by the amount of data we can get in a timely fashion, so we have to be thoughtful about how we roll out a budget going forward, because we won't have, we won't ever have insurance numbers that we can rely upon for property and casualty until end of March, beginning of April. Health insurance is probably end of January, beginning of February. So what we can do before the holiday season is get all the compensation nailed down, which is why I went to such great detail with the personnel supplement, is that those entries won't change much. We'll print that document out around Thanksgiving time, nail down the compensation budget, nail down the revenue projection, at least until we get the cherry sheet, and that will give us a sense of what might still be allocable for expenses and for capital after that. But as far as this year goes, we did a five-year budget last year, the department had signed on to it. A couple needed to reorganize things, the fire chief needed to reorganize some of The fire chief needed to reorganize some of his expenses. We needed to reorganize around a couple of personnel, and we have supplemented our personnel with some outside consultants in a couple of narrow, but very important areas, so management information systems and building inspection. Building inspection's going to ramp back considerably because we're not going to rely upon that, except for very special circumstances that are justified by the revenue they generate. But on the management information systems, it hasn't paid for itself, that would be an exaggeration, but we've generated a lot of savings. We have certainly resolved a great many shortfalls that we had in our network and our system. But in the grand scheme of things, it's a pivot budget. We were able to reallocate resources to priorities without cutting any services. We are now on, as I said to the finance committee tonight, we are now on to the marathon portion of the race.
Bless you.
You know, this, we came sprinting out of the blocks. Last year, we needed to justify what we would do if an override passed or didn't pass. That conversation was had, there was a resolution to it. This year was the year to pivot. And now we have to lock down ongoing operations for the next four or five years, and cut where we can cut, but most importantly, focus on revenue growth to sustain the level of services we have. And there's nothing more grandiose to it than that. Thank you, sir.
So, we can vote on it. Does it need to be voted on tonight? Or do you think it would make sense to hold to the 16?
Well, it's part of your warrant, so...
We'd have to, wouldn't we?
I think you, if you do that, we can focus on other areas of the warrant.
I would entertain...
Well, back to our EDC issue. The other day, you mentioned you were looking for a wink and a nod that we were going to give you as much leeway to make that happen. Approving the budget tonight, regardless of the warrant, will that free up additional time? Should it be needed to help push EDC along?
We're at a critical point now. We're trying to reconfigure some things, and it's all hands on deck.
So let's move this thing.
I see no reason not to.
Are you going to make a motion?
Gladly, what are we doing? Make a motion that we approve the FY20 budget that was presented in our packet last week and discussed today.
Second.
Made by Sam. Tim, seconded by Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Approved, signed, May 6, 2019, town meeting warrants, and possible vote?
You already voted to close the warrant tonight, so what you're doing tonight is approving the items that are on the warrant and signing it. At this point, moving forward, if you take anything off or add, you'll have to reopen the warrant.
Okay.
Add or remove, and then close it again. We can still make changes to the wording and everything, but the items are what you're approving tonight.
What's our deadline for opening, reopening, and closing, Suzanne? If you know.
We have to get this back to the clerk. Give me a second. For the annual town meeting, it has to be to the clerk seven days before the meeting. And for the special, I believe it's 14. It is 14 days. But we have other things. We have to get the flyer out to print, and we have other deadlines that we have to meet also.
So FinCom's public hearing is April 10. And they would have to post...
Yeah.
April 8.
So we're up against...
Yeah, we're kind of where we should be, but yeah.
I would move that we close the warrant.
It is already closed.
Okay.
So you would have to...
You have to approve it and sign it.
There have been some things that were removed. Nothing has been added since you last saw it. We might, are we removing number 27 on the special? On the annual, I'm sorry? I have not heard one word about this one.
If it were to be removed, we'd have to open it again.
It would be the first under item 10. It would be the very first page. Did I mess up? Item 27?
Oh, you know what? You know, I've limited patience for that one. It's been out there forever.
Right, and I've heard nothing.
So take it off.
All right.
My thought.
Do we need to reopen it to do that?
No, because you haven't approved it yet. You're now going to approve it without that item.
Okay, so that item is off?
That item is off.
I would then move that we approve and sign the warrant.
As amended.
As amended.
Is the dog one on this?
Oh yes, let's take that one off too. Sorry.
The dog one.
Is the animal.
I withdraw my motion.
If Hal was here, he'd bark.
He would. That's Article 15.
Thank you. Article 15 will off.
Before anybody makes another motion...
I'm holding off.
Let's review and see what else needs to be removed.
Hold on, we have Joe.
Yeah? Oh, guess who's here? Well, we're going to be holding your item anyways. We need to have a public hearing, and what they want to do is have you sit with town council and go over things.
Okay.
All right? How was the concert? You haven't gone yet.
Hey, no, they canceled it.
Oh, no.
So you're not in trouble with your wife?
Who was concerned?
I guess one of the band members. I feel good, Matt, for a second.
I read that today.
I feel his pain.
I'm going to run next door to FinCom and see if they want Article 14 or not. And that would be the only one I have a question.
Oh, thank you, that was the other one, right.
I'm not making any motions while you're gone.
There is some other stuff, as well as the impact on the town, because it's bringing the Board of Health into a bigger role than what they've been in before. So there's a lot of issues that they decided to hold off on it. So you can either stay, or you can go.
This is really nice.
Yeah. I'm starting to get into it a little bit. It's a great ride.
Who's kicking?
Tapping.
He's providing entertainment.
You don't even hear that in that. Echoes into that, mate. It's probably the most intelligent thing heard today. For me, anyway.
Yeah, I'd agree.
So I'll start tap dancing.
Well, can... While we're waiting for Matt, do you want to approve some minutes?
Sure.
Why not? Good idea, Timothy.
You could even do item 11, too.
I would make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of March 19, 2019.
And I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You want to go ahead and do item 12? I mean, 11?
Sure. Just the second reading, correct?
There's been absolutely no change in this policy whatsoever. It is available upon request if someone is to come in and ask for it.
It'll be on the website tomorrow morning.
And it will be on the website as of tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, by tomorrow.
I would entertain...
So I move that we approve the website disclaimer and privacy policy.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You?
You're very welcome. I'm going to step out one moment. I'll be right back.
Are we in pause mode? Okay.
Yeah.
Are we officially paused?
Can we pause?
Take a five?
Yeah, that's... It's what Google asks us.
Okay, we're back.
So where were we? Were we going to take that off, Matt?
All right, so here's the, here's the final analysis. We're asked by the Superintendent of Water and Wastewater to leave the GBI driveway on, please. We are requested to please leave Article 14, which should be the proposal to reduce the membership number of FinCom. Please leave that on there as a placeholder. They have been discussing it. Interestingly enough, they have five out of nine present tonight, and they are, there is no consensus on whether or not they would support Article 14. So they need their other members to be there to decide what to do. So really, it's only 15 that you'd be taking off.
All right, so leave 27 on. Is that...
Yes.
Okay.
So only minus 50?
Checking my hearing.
That is it. You may proceed. Are we sure?
We are now sure.
I would vote that we approve and sign the warrant as amended.
And we'll second that.
Thank you.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
And that's both warrants?
Both warrants, yes. That's what I meant, I said warrants, yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you have at least eight, seven to eight pages of each, please.
Brings us to the DCR announcements. Purchase of 14-plus acres off of Wallem Lake Road. Possible vote. I'm going to go on record immediately and say I'm not in favor of this until they come in and sit down and have a chat with us. I think that's my position as well.
And I would agree with that position.
I expressed full approval for your draft letter as well.
I thought it was well-written.
That I saw earlier.
I thought you did agree, though.
Agreed.
You want the letter to note that it is, the announcement will not be made?
Yes.
Is there a way that we can say that it is the intent of the Board of Selectmen to obstruct said purchase?
I think obstruct may be a bit strong, Mr. Chairman. I think, what if we, I would be in favor of some language that we are not in favor. And we could probably reference the difficulties we've had with DCR in meeting and coming to terms with them. Given the fact that communication is lacking, we're not in favor of this, and hopefully, that's a little bit of a prod for them to...
I may be stretching my memory a slight bit, but I believe that when we got into that whole other, the last purchase from DCR, that they said that there was no additional intent to buy any more land in the town.
And I think Suzanne's great effort dragged out the minutes to document that as well.
But in addition to that, they promised to give us any heads up...
Right.
If they were going to consider...
Exactly.
...any future purchases before they presented us with an announcement.
I also recall that we had the, they were willing to concede if we were not in favor of such things.
I recall that as well, Kevin.
So we're not in favor. Tell them to walk away.
And it, you know, if we want to go one step farther, and I think I defer to everyone's decision-making ability here, do we want to reference the fact that we're not in favor? You had previously told us that if we weren't in favor, that you wouldn't purchase the land. So we expect you to look all the way up. Do we want to go that far?
Yes. I'd like to, quite frankly, since we're on record, and I'm feeling a little feisty as it is, is that I'm quite sick of DCR. If you'd like to know the honest, the god truth, is that the only reason that they came to the table and talked to us in an amenable fashion in the first place was because yours truly threatened publicly to close the damn road.
I agree.
So perhaps, we look into, maybe we don't close the road. But I would like to start an exploratory committee on installing a toll. Other than that, DCR, I can wish them affront adieu. They don't need to come back again.
I think I echo your sentiment that the only time they... I think I echo your sentiment that the only time they work collaboratively with us is when we force their hand. So, I think that's probably...
Well, I'm gonna expand that, actually. I am equally as disappointed in our state senator and state rep for not advocating for us in an effective enough manner, not only when it comes to DCR, but also where it comes to this town trying to get grant money or bond money or even collect the money that they had promised to us in campaigns.
We do have an issue certainly with the fund, the Wallam Lake Fund. I don't think we've received any outlay from there.
I mean, well, no, we asked for a dribble-dribble for code red and they didn't even respond to the letter. Well, I'm incredulous. I, listen, it wasn't the greatest summer last year, but there's no way that they only got twenty-three hundred cars. There is no way.
Could you be more specific than dribble-dribble?
I'm guessing that they may have had difficulty staffing the collection activity.
That's a problem in and of itself right there. I think that's kind of the first line of defense, whoever the DCR person is at the gate. And if we're getting a portion of the gate, to use entertainment language, and there is no gate, that's a big problem.
I think the other part is my last tirade that I'm gonna go off on. That unless our state senator and state rep don't start stepping up and showing us their A-game, they'll be hard-pressed to get my support in their next election attempt. I'm sorry, but if you tell somebody you're gonna do something, you do it. I promised two little kids an ice cream day.
And you delivered.
You think that if they can manage to come up and get a town that's in financial shambles, a MassWorks grant with all their political pressure, they could do something for Douglas that's been nothing but supportive of them.
And speaking of promises, I believe Tim and I were promised ice cream. That's a promise you did not hear.
I think that's a...
He's sending mixed signals. He's down on a bylaw for puppies and kittens, but he's all for ice cream day. Where is one to go with this?
I could go on for hours.
Apparently, yes.
I'm, like I said, I'm just hostile enough...
We ran out of coffee, Mr. Chairman.
That could be what's doing it. Well, I'm sorry, I'm like, I don't care if I'm on record, I don't care if the telegram and gazette sees it. I'm sick of politicians coming in here and peeing on our leg and telling us it's raining. Fatman's done it, McKenna's done it, the commissioner from DCR's done it, and they seem to think that we're the laughingstock in a joke and that we won't actually do anything. So, mark my words, right after the election, here in Douglas, I'm gonna do something. I don't care what we have to do. I'll go out with two-by-fours and sawhorses and build my old damn toll, damn toll. But they're gonna step up and they're gonna start helping Douglas or, look, I'll take to the press and do whatever I have to do. I don't work for a Fortune Five company and the handcuffs are off. I can talk to the press all day long now. I'm their worst nightmare. They wanna step up and start doing their game. Seriously. It's pathetic.
It does seem that we have to provide the motivation for DCR to do what we think they should be doing anyway.
That's what we have a state senator and a state rep for.
We've always had to do that.
Right, I don't think it's right, though. To be blunt, Tim.
No, no, but this is scandalous, this permit or this... The amount of people coming to the park and what we're supposed to statutorily be able to access when we want, right? This is, Mr. Chairman, if you're gonna go anywhere, that's probably where I'd start.
Absolutely.
What's happening to this? And if we do have...
And if they think we're gonna let them buy another fourteen-plus acres, they have a better chance of seeing God.
Well, they may just take the Commonwealth's hammer and do it anyway.
Go ahead, I'll fight the state. I wasn't afraid to wrestle before Kent. Can you put ladder one down across Wallam Lake Road? How hard is that to do?
I will say that when you brought up the toll committee, I'm intrigued and I was immediately, I thought of the scene in Blazing Saddles. I don't know if anybody remembers that. They set up a toll booth in the middle of the desert. And you would have to pay a dime to get through. It was in the middle of the, there's nothing around and you had to pay a dime to get through. I'm not comparing Douglas to the desert at all, but it was just the first image that jumped in my mind. And I thought I should share it.
Well, it's a great chair, but I'm telling you, like, I really don't care anymore. Like, that's the long and the short of it. I don't have any desire for the commissioner to come in and sit here and talk to us because I don't believe a word that's coming out of his mouth. And unless Fatman and McKenna are walking in here with a MassWorks grant or a sizable check, they can stay in Sutton or Worcester or Webster or wherever the hell else they are. Start working for Douglas or stay out. Next.
Admin's report.
Oh, jeez, well, that's, I'm feeling like I really can't follow that up. We've done a lot tonight that constituted my report. I mean, that's, we've been working on the budget, the warrant, the tuffin shirts. I haven't much to add to what we worked on tonight.
You've done an excellent job, Matt. I appreciate all of your efforts.
I echo that.
Any old business?
Just back to this, are we clear with what we're doing?
Yes, I'm gonna add something there about the announcement that they've asked for. I alluded to it in the first paragraph, probably more direct.
Yeah. Could you allude to, there's a certain emoji...
Toll booth in Blazing Saddles, or is that going to...
Well, that's one of the things you save for the meaning itself. It has stump value. I guess, going back to my announcements, one thing, Mr. Chairman, we had a good stop. The fire chief, the fire chief is here. And I almost want you to do just a three or four-sentence description of what happened and how it was contained and the professionalism of your guys.
Yeah?
Well, either that or you can shout it from there, chief, but...
Can you make your way through the crowds? Come on up.
Down from the stadium seating?
Well, I guess I would say all worked out well, but very complicated fire in a very challenging building, seven-unit, multi-family building, three stories. Couldn't be more proud of the department because they really stepped up their A-game. And to do that at two in the morning in the dark is very difficult at times. So, on arrival, we had heavy fire on the first floor, supposedly everyone had evacuated. But I'd like to double-check those things just to be safe and make sure that there were no mistakes made. So, we had two hose lines running fairly quickly and we were doing searches of all three floors. I had a team that did searches of all three floors. They were in the process of doing that when the first mutual aid company showed up. The fire got complicated when we tried, because it's a balloon frame and there's no fire stops between the floors, so the fire escalated and spread to the second and third floor, so I pulled all the companies out, all mutual aid. We evacuated the building. We went defensive, dumped a whole lot of water on it through windows, reassessed, and then we were able to put companies back in and extinguish the fire rather quickly after that. So, it was a change in strategies and tactics and just try and, try and certain things and ventilating the roof and whatnot, and finally we were able to push the fire out and assure that there was nobody else in the building, so... Can't be thankful enough to the guys. I mean, I just can't say enough about how proud I am of them. I mean, without, I mean, I'm standing there with a radio and a deputy chief whose operations and two radios aren't gonna put the fire out, so...
No, but leadership does.
Well, I appreciate that and I can't say enough about John as well, John and Adam. Adam was, the difficult part is trying to be, not run around and you wanna assess everything and look at, get a bird's-eye view of everything that's going on on a big building like that, but you gotta sort of stay stationary so that you can coordinate and rely on other chiefs and other people as well. And so, you know, it really, it worked out well and, you know, Red Cross was in fairly quickly, right off the bat, early on. And so, I guess there's some donation efforts and some efforts that try to help those who lost their, who lost their belongings. But again, I couldn't be more proud of the department, more proud of the collaboration of mutual aid. And to really keep that at a third alarm for the size of that building was remarkable, quite honestly, but it was a collaborative effort. It's just, we all work well together in this area, so, and we enjoy working together, so...
Chief, it was a job well done. And the fact that there was no casualties, no loss of life, no injury, that's the biggest attachment, a fantastic job done.
I appreciate it.
You can replace your property and houses, you can't replace people.
That's, that's the whole thing. I mean, it escalated to a point where everyone was out. I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna make sure my guys are safe and we're gonna do things right. I'm not gonna risk lives to save a building that an insurance company could tear down. So, you know, that's the way, that's the way it goes, so... But I appreciate the kind words and I'll take it back to the department, but...
Please do.
Appreciate it.
I felt thank you to all of them.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, we wanna thank the town clerk, too, for getting up in the middle of the night and opening up this building and being generous with hot coffee and fresh food. I don't know how she paid for it, I'll find out, but everybody was, they're humanitarian, their human needs were taken care of pretty quickly.
I think we should get our town clerk to make a speech about what she's done.
She loves public speaking, that's what I hear.
Thoroughly enjoys it. No, it's, it was probably one of the proudest moments that I've had sitting on this board is when communities come together during times like that, that's what really shows you what the backbone of a town is all about. So, I mean, that's just, that's what makes us Douglas, you know? I mean, you see a lot of bickering and fighting that happens on the social media pages, but when something bad happens, I don't think I've ever seen a community come together so fast, so quickly and show kindness and grace the way that we do. That's all I got. Any new business? Seeing is none. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.